Good evening, I'm calling this meeting to order. The time is 5:30 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, this meeting is officially open with a quorum present. Over the last few weeks, our district has experienced a tragic loss of students in our school communities. Before we make our pledges to the U.S. and Texas flags this evening, let me ask us to pause for a moment of silence in remembrance in honor of a student from Northside High School who tragically passed away Thanksgiving Day. Let us also remember the Wedgewood 6th Grade School Campus which lost a student, as well as Eastern Hills Elementary who had a student pass away last week. We are in support of these schools and each individual student's families, and now I'll ask us for a moment of silence. We will continue our board meeting with the pledges of allegiance led by the students from Washington Heights Elementary School where Mary Cantu is the principal. She will introduce her students in just a moment, but first let's stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the states, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, President Ramos, members of the board, and Dr. Scribner. I'd like to recognize our wonderful Washington Heights students who assisted us with the pledge today. I have Pedro Padillo, and he is accompanied by his mother, Ms. Padilla. I have both Brilliant and Brielle Armstrong, sisters accompanied by their mother, Ms. Armstrong. I have Angel Guerrero here with me, accompanied by his father, Mr. and Mrs. Guerrero, his father and mother. And I have Miley Frost, accompanied by her mother, Lydia Favila, and her father, Mylon Frost. I'd also like to recognize my leadership team here supporting our students. We have our counselor, Ms. Vasquez, and our data analyst, Ms. Oduthayo. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mrs. Cantu. Thank you for Washington Heights.
I apologize, I left one of my students off. Flavio Talamantes accompanied by his mother.
All right, great, thank you. So again, thank you, Washington Heights Elementary. Thank you, Mrs. Cantu. Next, we will have Mr. Clint Bond from the communications team walk us through the next round of presentations.
Thank you, President Ramos. Our student greeters this evening are from the Army JROTC Unit at Carter Riverside High School where Greg Ruthard is the principal. I will ask them to stand as we introduce them, and we'll thank them as a group. First is Cadet Captain Martha Pacheco, Cadet Captain Maria Antiveros, Cadet Command Sergeant Major Carla Chavez, and Cadet Staff Sergeant Kevin Severin. And the senior Army instructor is Lieutenant Colonel Ron Deixter, so let's thank them. For those of you who were fortunate enough to arrive early this evening, you were entertained by the choir from the Edward J. Briscoe Elementary School under the direction of Rebecca Wilson. Octavia Gray is the principal, so if we could get all of those students to stand, we can thank them too. Joining us this evening is May Ferguson, president and CEO of Fort Worth Sister Cities International, and Beth Wyble, the senior program manager. Ms. Ferguson will recognize our schools and administration for over 30 years of support, dedication, commitment, and participation in global education for students, parents, and educators. May?
Thank you, Clint. We'll go through this very quickly, but just like the Fort Worth ISD, Fort Worth Sister Cities International prepares students for career and college and leadership success, so we are proud to be partners with all of you in these efforts. I want to make you aware of the programming that is being done right here in the Fort Worth, with the Fort Worth ISD. Whether, if you know it or not, Fort Worth has nine official partnerships around the world in Indonesia, Hungary, China, Isuatini, Japan, France, Italy, Mexico, and Germany. And I want to make you aware of the programs right here that the Fort Worth ISD students and educators are a huge part of. Almost 60% of the programming we do annually are focused on youth. We do, I'm going to go back to that one, the Youth Ambassador Exchanges. These are high school students, they're invited to visit each one of our sister cities, the nine cities that I mentioned before. We do dual-language immersion camp, which we're very proud, Superintendent Scribner, I just met with the team with dual languages to plan the seventh camp, which will be held this summer, we think at De Zavala Elementary School, but it is a program where we bring Toluca, Mexico facilitators that are native speakers, of course, to Fort Worth for three weeks to work with these K through 3, 3rd grade students. We have our Junior International Leadership Academy, that focuses on the middle school students here locally in Fort Worth. And our Japanese Middle School Program, which I find particularly interesting for the Fort Worth ISD because your campuses always host these students. We just had 36 Japanese students from our sister city of Nagaoka, Japan, that stayed with the McLean Middle School, Daggett, World Languages Institute, and the Young Women's Academy. They did programs in the school, as well as were home hosted by families from the Fort Worth ISD. Our International Leadership Academy is focused on high school students, and we always have students from all of the high schools here in Fort Worth that is now in its 31st year. What I want to tell you most about is our Global Academic Fellows. The principals in all of your high school and middle schools appoint a representative from their schools, which we call the Global Academic Fellows, and these people are valuable to us in getting the information out to the students and the families of the programming we do. Last year alone, we provided $45,000 worth of scholarships for Fort Worth ISD students and educators. We sent 335 students participated and 64 educators. And some of particular note are Ernie Gomez and Rhonda O'Brien with the Northside High School Legacy Foundation. They worked tirelessly to raise money to send students from their school on many of our exchanges. And I also want to recognize Jay Karima. I bet a lot of you know him. He was the Fort Worth ISD Teacher of the Year several years ago. He's at the Tabs High School and Heather Karima at Tremble Tech. They have done more for the Fort Worth ISD in promoting global education than any others. I also want to recognize the World Languages Institute, Principal Guadalupe Borreta, International Newcomer Academy, Principal Angelia Ross, Young Women's Leadership Academy, Principal Tamara Albury. They've done a stellar job for the last couple of years. And I want to conclude to let you know that in 2020, we've already, since September, we've been taking applications from all students for our programs for 2020. We interviewed 110 students last month and selected 96 of them to represent Fort Worth around the world. And of those 96 students that will do this, 65 of them came from the Fort Worth ISD. That's 68% of the people that are going out to represent Fort Worth. And the diversity in this group is amazing because it's our job to show and promote Fort Worth to the rest of the world, and we want it to reflect who we are. 55% of those students are Hispanic, 25% Caucasian, 15 African-American, and 5% Asian. So I think that's a pretty phenomenal representation for Fort Worth, and I want to thank you and let you know that we couldn't do what we're doing without the great teachers and schools that we have here in Fort Worth. So thank you very much.
Would Mark Moses and Coleman Odom please stand if they're here? Okay, I don't see them here, but both of these students are seniors at Pascal High School. They recently traveled to Soul Ross University in Alpine where they presented research at the Texas Herpetology Society Fall Symposium. They were the only high school students in attendance. All other presenters were graduate students or professional biologists. Mark co-authored a poster with science teacher Andrew Brinker documenting the movement of certain turtle species in the Clear Fork of the Trinity River between recaptures. And Coleman co-authored a poster with TCU graduate student Shelley Wu and teacher Brinker identifying eight different taxa of diatoms. I had to look that one up. Please join in congratulating these students for such an outstanding accomplishment and for teacher Andrew Brinker for providing the educational guidance. And Troy Langston is the principal at Pascal High School. This evening, we are delighted to recognize a parent volunteer from Bonnie Bray Elementary School. Tania Garcia, will you please stand? Bonnie Bray Elementary is full of energy and always has something going on, and those same words can describe Mrs. Garcia. Mrs. Garcia participated in Bonnie Bray's parent university for two years and gives back now by teaching her own class to new parents. When she's not teaching, she spends her time volunteering in other capacities such as field trips, helping teachers with needed supplies, filling classroom needs, and assisting the after-school program by decorating for events. To say she is an involved parent is an understatement. Although Bonnie Bray has many great volunteers, Mrs. Garcia definitely stands out. She doesn't do just all of this just for her daughter Emily, who's in the 4th grade, she does it because she truly cares about all the children at Bonnie Bray. Principal Samantha Gonzalez says she never seeks recognition for any work she does here. In fact, if you don't ask around, you probably wouldn't know about how much she does at our school. Talk about humble. Thank you, Tania Garcia, for being an exemplary volunteer, helping teachers, students, your fellow parents, and giving back to your community. We would like to present you with our prestigious Pam Day Award, named after former principal Pamela Day, who was a vibrant and imaginative educator who served the Fort Worth ISD for 23 years. Mrs. Day was known both for her high standards and her ability to see humor in life. She was a perennial favorite of students, parents, and fellow educators, and she passed away in April 7, 2013. Family communication specialist Jennifer Perez will now present Mrs. Garcia with a plaque of appreciation. I just want to bring to your attention that the recognition of the JP Elder and Northside High School football teams originally scheduled for this evening will now be observed at the January 28 meeting. Tiffany Rogers, president of the Fort Worth ISD Council of PTAs, will make the next recognition, and followed by trustee Jackson with a recognition.
My name is Tiffany Rogers, and as he said, I am the president of the Fort Worth ISD Council of PTAs, and it is my honor to be here this evening to present a gift of gratitude to Dr. Scribner for his support of all Fort Worth ISD PTAs. He joined all 69 in the district. I'd like to take a moment to tell you a little about PTA and why it is so vital to our schools and our children, so you can understand why Dr. Scribner's impact through joining our PTAs is so profound. PTA is the nation's largest child advocacy association. We train parents to advocate for children by taking action and forming coalitions that make positive change. Through PTA, members are informed about what they can do to affect local, state, and federal policies that most impact children, families, and schools. Our level of influence is determined by our membership numbers. The more members we have, the louder our collective voice, and the greater influence we have to affect positive change for our children, families, and schools at all levels. PTA is larger than any one campus. When someone joins a PTA, they are automatically a member of the state PTA and the national PTA, which gives them access to training, information about how they can affect change, and a multitude of resources that include grants for programs and scholarships for faculty and high school seniors. PTA creates the village that helps raise our kids and strengthen our families and communities. Waverly Park PTA President Christine Williams said, "Dr. Scribner joining our PTA shows that anyone can support a PTA simply by becoming a member." Not just parents, but anyone interested in supporting schools and their community should join. Having Dr. Scribner as a Waverly Park PTA member makes us feel like we matter, that despite how large Fort Worth ISD is, that he truly wants to connect with each school and promote the value that PTA brings. Brittany Castile of South Hills Elementary PTA said, "As a Fort Worth ISD teacher, Fort Worth ISD parent, and a PTA board member too, it means a great deal that he would join every PTA. It clearly sends a message to every stakeholder that PTA matters because all of our children matter." And Sarah Webster of Benbrook Elementary PTA said, "I am so grateful that Dr. Scribner joined the Benbrook Elementary School PTA. It really shows the community what a great leader he is and how much he values and supports us." Our goal district-wide this year is to reach 10,000 members. I'd like to thank those that are a part of our current membership of 7,143, which includes Dr. Scribner, many of U.S. School Board trustees, and many in our audience. You can still see, we still have some work ahead of us, but each person here tonight can help make sure there is a voice for every child in Fort Worth ISD by joining a PTA, or 69, or recruiting one new member for a PTA. Literally, anyone can join a PTA. And if you're not sure how to do that, please let me connect you with a PTA that could use your help. If you're a PTA member in the audience, would you mind standing? In closing, Dr. Scribner, you have shown a level of support to PTA that Fort Worth ISD has never seen, and we are overwhelmed with gratitude for your partnership to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering families and communities to advocate for all children. We have a lot of PTA cards for you, and we hope that you can proudly display them with this presentation. Maybe you can find a place for that. We do truly appreciate all of your support. Thank you.
It's my honor to present Territ Regional Water District President, Board President Jack Stevens, if you would, would stand up and let us recognize you. Also like to recognize Matt Oliver, Shanna Kate Granger, and my former student, Mr. JD Seven years ago, I received a call from JD Granger, and he said, "I have all this ICE. It's cold, it's ready to go, and we don't open for a couple of weeks. I'd like to have some kids come out." So I called Sherry Breed, and she said, "You gotta be kidding me, how does this fit into the tees?" But we got it done, and that year, I think we only brought in about 100 kids, but Ms. Breed did it, and I thank you for that. The next year, we did better, and Ms. Mullinar and Dr. Washington and Ms. Breed, again, worked on this. And every year, I believe, Ms. Mullinar is tasked with working on this. And over the last seven years, we've seen equity in motion because all 83 of our schools have been supported, the elementaries, by Panther ICE, and they are an amazing organization that's taken all of our kids through, and when you do the exit polls with the kids, over 80% of them have not been skating before. So this is a one-time opportunity for many of them, and I'd just like to have them come up and say a few words. It's a value of over $100,000 to our students, so let's hear what they have to say about it, and I want to thank them for giving back.
Thank you so much, and we just wanted to be here and say thank you, guys. The staff has been absolutely fantastic. As Ms. Jackson mentioned, when they first, when we first thought of this idea, everybody jumped on board, and we've had the opportunity to host these students that may have not had the opportunity to go ice skating. And so, not only is it a way for them to get out, move naturally, and have a fun time and recreate, but also they do things in the classroom that relates back to the ice skating. So we're proud to host them, and we just wanted to thank you for the partnership and look forward to many more years of doing it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Shanna. JD, a couple of words?
I just want to thank Fort Worth ISD for all that you do. You're doing a phenomenal job. It's tough for me to talk about it. My kids actually go to Fort Worth ISD, but Pascal, McLean. I'm going to be leaving her shortly. My kid has a basketball game at 6:30. He's doing very, very well, but thank you for all that you do. Part of it may have been selfish, but you know, going through there, you also, my mother's a teacher, you see a lot of kids that are exposed to different things. You only can see sometimes as far as you can actually touch, and so trying to make that a reality is important to all of us, but thank you for making it happen.
Thank you so much. And I'd just like to say that JD has always had that intellectual curiosity, the ingenuity, and the get-it-done attitude that you see in him today. You could see it when he was 11 years old. So let's give them one more round of applause.
Thank you, trustee Jackson. Thank you all for this evening, all the students for being here, and family and parents. This concludes the recognition portion of the meeting. We will take a short break so that our guests may depart if they so choose. Moving on to agenda item number four, reports and presentations. Dr. Scribner, would you like to say a few words regarding this presentation?
Thank you very much, President Ramos. Tonight, we'd like to update our school board and school community on the 2017 capital improvement program. We're off to a jackrabbit start and want to update you with some narrative, some specifics with regard to what we're doing, and also some visuals. So with that, I'll turn it over to our chief of the CIP, Vicky Burris.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner. President Ramos, Dr. Scribner, and members of the board. This evening, we have some highlights to share from our 2017 capital improvement program. As you know, Fort Worth ISD chose to invest the majority of the $750 million in bond on extensive renovations to our 14 high school comprehensive campuses. Early conversations that were held with our high school students helped drive some of the upgrades that you're going to see tonight. Architects responded with wider color palettes and finishes incorporating school colors and mascots, in combination with some graphic representations related to school spirit and wayfinding. Fort Worth ISD considers student and employee safety as our top priority. When 2017 work is complete, there will be a security vestibule at the entry of every comprehensive high school. We all know that strong visitor management systems is the key to controlling who gains access to the rest of the building. These secure front entries will make our computerized visitor management system more effective. These are only a couple of special features that you'll see in this presentation, and at this time, I'll ask Barry and his team to share some additional details and photos. Barry?
Thank you, Vicky. I've been told that presentations of this type are the most boring presentations that there are. I'm unsure whether or not it's the content or the actual presenter, but I'm sure that by the time I finish, you guys will be able to answer that question for me. I'd like to introduce my team before we get too far down the road. To my right, on the other side of Vicky, we have Brian Johnson, program deputy program director, Gary Annison, our pre-construction manager, and then Tara Grunier, our design manager, and of course, you guys will know, our temporary member of the team tonight, Jerry Moore. I'd like to just take a few minutes and kind of give you a quick overview of what accomplishments we've made in the last two years. This is a pretty exciting time for us because we actually have finally got into the meat and potatoes of this bond program. And almost two years ago to the day, we were Presidio, was approved to manage the 2017 bond program. This bond program was originally planned as a six-year program, and it was, we were charged with designing the facilities that addressed 21st century classrooms, and you'll hear a little bit more about that tonight from our design managers and Mr. Moore. The bond program primarily consisted of high schools and campus, high school campuses, and what we were charged with was trying to produce and bring forth a new face of these schools. In doing so, we wanted to keep an eye towards safety and security of the schools at the entries. We also were to address the learning model for the 21st century classroom. But in this last two years, we have executed our contract with Presidio, and we have hired 26 individuals in our office, in the SIP office over there, to manage this program. We reviewed architects and assigned projects to 19 individual architects. We developed designs and budgeted the scope for 33 individual projects. This took the majority of one year to get the designs and programs in place. We created new educational specifications that would reflect the new educational model. We also created opportunities for smaller general contractors with 11 competitive seal proposal projects in our Jack Rabbit Quick Start projects. We also created construction manager at risk requests for proposals. Of those, we received about 125 proposals that we considered. Of those 125 proposals, we actually interviewed 63, individual interviews for 63 contractors. This represents 15 of our projects, of the 33 projects will be construction manager at risk. We conducted pre-construction in all 15 of those projects, and we're still partially in pre-construction mode with some. We started construction on nine of these projects, with 15 being under construction by the summer of 2020. But perhaps the most important part of this was our ability to escalate the schedule for this delivery of this program. We're actually cutting 18 months off the six-year program, so four and a half years we're going to get this program finished. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Brian and Gary to talk a little bit more about the bond program.
Just briefly, we'd like to hit on our hub update, as shown on the screen, as presented to the Citizens Oversight Committee as part of our September presentation. We have, to date, committed 44.39% of all bond dollars to hub firms. So at the time, late September, just south of $70 million of all committed costs had gone to a hub-certified firm, and you can see the ethnicity and gender representations there on the chart. And so every time we get an opportunity to speak, we just want to continue to emphasize our focus on the historical underutilized business participation on this bond program. We have two full-time staff members that are responsible for outreach and compliance, and they work very hard on ensuring that this bond program not only meets but exceeds the district and board's goals as it relates to the participation with hub firms. And I'd like to go ahead and hand it over to Jerry to start with the design.
So as we jump into the design update, I wanted to take an opportunity to refresh our memory about the process, about where we started. In October of 2016, Fort Worth ISD began a conversation with our school community, asking about our highest hopes for learners here in Fort Worth ISD. The process, which we called innovative learning for our future, was essentially a facilities' master planning process for our comprehensive high schools. We wanted to know what we could do to bring all of our high schools up to 21st century, next-generation learning environments here in Fort Worth ISD. It's exciting to be sitting here on the academic side of the house now, sitting and planning before, and then taking that experience over into academics, to where we can see leadership in a facilities' planning phase to translate into the actual teaching and learning phase is a rare opportunity in education and an exciting opportunity for us moving forward. As you hear the design updates today, I would like for you to listen to a few key drivers that were intentional about in the design of this work. We want to hear state-of-the-art science labs, flexible CTE instructional spaces, updated media centers, collaboration and maker spaces, and space for collegiate programs. These are all different ways that Fort Worth ISD is reaching our board goals and our mission of the school district of preparing all students for success in college, career, and community leadership, and these are all components that you will see in the renovation of each of our comprehensive high schools. We'd like to go ahead and dive into- We'd like to go ahead and dive into the design update. So, Tara, let's go ahead and get started.
Great. Amon Carter Riverside High School. The goal of this campus is to create a master plan that creates a much more collegiate-feeling campus with a secure centralized courtyard. The new three-story, 110,000-square-foot addition includes fine arts, CTE, JROTC, science, athletics, and media center, which will complement the existing 1935 building. In order to make room for this addition, we were relocating the existing football field, creating a new state-of-the-art field and parking, which will ultimately result in an increase of 49 parking stalls on campus. The original building will receive new secured intrivestibule miscellaneous renovations throughout, and most importantly, will restore the historical windows along the south elevation facing Yucca Avenue. Western Hills High School will receive interior campus renovations impacting over 2/3 of the existing building. Along with a new secured vestibule and main entry, the administration area will be moved to the front of the building for ease of access by visitors and students alike, and the media center has been moved from the lower level to the main floor to promote better student and community use. Comprehensive CTE programs will be provided, including a new completely renovated AV-TV production area. Pictured is the new front entry to Western Hills High School at the east elevation facing Bosson Avenue, with a hint of the school colors that will be seen at night to reinforce campus branding. Dunbar High School, like Western Hills, will receive major interior renovations throughout the campus to promote the district's 21st-century learning model in all content areas with a focus on science classrooms and labs, media center, fine arts, and a new revitalized cosmetology lab. Dunbar has also received an addition and renovation to its athletic fieldhouse, which we will talk about later. Again, the new main secured entry and vestibule, which is shown here, provides the campus a modernized street appearance facing Ramey Avenue with a welcoming Wildcat hello. Diamond Hill Jarvis High School will take on a new exterior appearance with the removal of its portable buildings located at the west end of the existing campus, with a new 51,000-square-foot science classroom and lab addition, and a new secured front entry and vestibule which faces Madell Street. In addition, a new 12,965-square-foot addition will be added at the north side of campus, which will house JROTC, welding, engineering, and robotics programs. There will be significant renovations throughout the existing building, including a new media center and creation of student collaboration areas throughout the campus. In total, with these two new additions, will increase the campus by 62,965 square feet. Benbrook Middle High School. Athletics and fine arts will be the focus of the new 32,349-square-foot addition at the east end of the existing middle school campus facing West Park and Overcrest Drives. The new competition gymnasium will accommodate 486 spectators in bleacher seating, as well as new athletic lobby with concession, athletic locker rooms, coach's office, and athletic storage to support the Benbrook Bobcat Middle School athletes. Also included in this addition is a new state-of-the-art band, orchestra, and choir halls, and two new visual fine arts classrooms. Middle school CTE classrooms will also be provided at the middle school building. There will be minor renovations to the existing high school building to accommodate CTE Tier One classrooms, and a 5,300-square-foot addition to accommodate four additional classrooms, and a stagecraft area to support the fine arts. Rounding out the campus improvements is a new fieldhouse, the baseball softball complex across Highway 377 at Dutch Branch Park, and the addition of 106 parking stalls at the campus, which is well-needed. Eastern Hills High School. A remarkable new look will be provided at Eastern Hills High School with new additions to the original 1957 building, which includes a new 49,000-square-foot addition incorporating new general classrooms, science classrooms and labs, visual arts classrooms, and a media center, along with a new front entry vestibule, which will provide a new enhanced entry experience along Wyler Boulevard for visitors and students. Several existing buildings on campus will be renovated throughout, including athletics, the cafeteria, fine arts, CTE Tier One, and Tier Two classrooms, with the addition of cybersecurity to this campus. This effort will provide a refreshed environment for all Highlanders. The front of OD Wyatt High School will now stand out with a new front entry and secured vestibule, providing a new entry experience for visitors and students alike facing Seminary Drive. A new bus pickup and drop-off lane will also be added for better vehicular traffic flow on this campus, which will parallel Seminary. Major renovations throughout the building with significant attention to the media center, science classroom and labs, JROTC, and CTE Tier One, and the Collegiate Academy. New construction of a 25,600-square-foot CTE addition will house both Tier One and the Health Science Technology Tier Two program. Pascal's High School renovations focus on blending the school's rich history dating back to 1936 with critical elements for 21st-century learning innovation. By creating student collaboration areas central to the expanded media center seen here, and implementing a more collegiate-type hub for student learning and engagement, Pascal's students will thrive in their new learning environment. Significant renovation is planned for most of the campus, 78%, to be exact. A new entry and secured vestibule facing Forest Park Boulevard will provide students and visitors a welcoming and safe introduction to the campus. Poly High School will feature a new 52,000-square-foot science building at the west end of campus, east of Beach Street, and north of Rosedale, with a skybridge connector to the existing building dating back to 1936. Shown here is the east elevation with that connector spoken of. Similar to Amon Carter High School, Poly seeks to complement the historical architecture of the existing campus with a new modern-day building, providing the Parrot's new instructional space with a focus on science classrooms and labs. Renovations throughout this campus provide a new look to the media center, cafeteria, and enhanced student collaborations throughout. Athletic field improvements were recently completed and will be highlighted later in this presentation. The South Hills Scorpions will be thrilled with the removal of all portable buildings scheduled to be replaced with a new 93,000-plus-square-foot addition, providing state-of-the-art science classrooms and labs, general classrooms, dance, and space for the Collegiate Academy. Much-needed realignment of content areas enables this campus to have a CTE center renovated and a large media center, collaboration areas, a new front entry facing McCart Avenue, and other general renovations. With the removal of the portables, parking spaces will be recreated, providing additional parking on this campus. The Southwest High School Raiders are already enjoying the use of their new robotics lab recently completed on campus. Like other campuses, Southwest High School will enjoy a new secured front entry and vestibule facing Ultima Mesa Boulevard, expanding the existing media center for increased student collaboration, including a tech help area, and a 4,800-square-foot four-classroom typical class, sorry, four typical classroom addition. Major interior renovations focus on science, JROTC, cafeteria, CTE, with a significant revamp to the AV-TV production area. A major component of this campus is conversion to a geothermal HVAC system, providing an economical solution in ROI to the district. The Raiders will also enjoy a new 9,000-square-foot athletic facility, which is currently under construction, east of the main campus adjacent to Woodway Drive. Arlington Heights High School will undergo significant interior renovations in the existing main building with content realignment of general classrooms, CTE, fine arts, and a new two-story media center with student collaboration areas, and rework of their existing courtyard to provide exterior learning opportunities. A new 44,950-square-foot building shown here, located south of the baseball field, will provide students with 16 new science classrooms and eight labs. A new CTE building south of the baseball field will also consolidate the various components of the agricultural program from across the campus into one. A new secured vestibule with a realignment of the front reception area will be provided with faces West Freeway Access Road without compromising the historical architecture of the 1935 building. Trimble Tech, one of the district's most historical campuses, is approximately 350,000 square feet. It will be receiving interior renovations to, again, almost 75% of its campus. This project deals with the enhancement and expansion of the district's Tier Two CTE programs, and the addition of cybersecurity and logistics to the program offerings. Also included, but not limited, is the renovation of the relocation of the culinary classrooms and labs, which will include a new bistro, new media center with info tech desk, collaboration spaces, Health Science Technology Lab, cosmetology, JROTC, and a secured entry vestibule. And last is the Young Men's Leadership Academy. The young men of YM La should be filled with enthusiasm in their completely revitalized existing campus. Major interior renovations will occur throughout nearly all of the existing building with a new accessible secured front entrance, which will provide a new emblematic gateway to this campus off Willy Street. A new classroom building addition will be added to this campus, as well as a new addition to house a competition gym to seat 600 spectators, a band hall, practice rooms, and engineering classrooms in robotics. The existing buildings will be painted to complement the new additions, providing a cohesive look at campus that will positively stand out in the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you, Tara. Just as a reminder, my name's Gary Aninson, I'm a pre-construction manager for Presidio. Myself and Brian will walk you guys through our construction update. We've got about a dozen slides to walk you through all the construction that's currently ongoing across the district. First and foremost, we'll start with Amon Carter Riverside addition renovation. You'll see two images. The image on the right shows some demolition. As Tara indicated, we are building a new 110,000-square-foot addition, and will be renovating 25,000 square feet of existing space. We will be relocating an existing baseball field and providing new student parking. Step one of this project was to abate hazardous material from existing facilities that were built in the 1950s and the demolition of those buildings. The aerial image shown on the left shows the completion of those demolition activities. Our contractor has now switched focus to underground retention for storm drainage requirements and the new student parking. We will begin work on the large 110,000-square-foot addition in early January. I spent my afternoon, actually, with the contractor and architect going through our subcontractor bid opening, and we're very pleased with the results of that bid opening today, and very excited to continue this project.
At Arlington Heights Athletics, we're in the process of building a new 6,000-square-foot facility, followed by renovation of 4,800-square-foot of the existing facility. We faced significant challenges because of the area of the site where the new athletic facility is. The area of the site, which is adjacent to the football field, almost acts as a detention point, not only for Arlington Heights, but for the surrounding areas. So, whenever we get a rain or small chance of rain, water flows from the site, our construction area. This has been very challenging to work in, and we've had, to get creative and time our concrete pours just right. Instead of pouring the slab at once, we had to break it up into three pours to beat the weather. Now, now that we've accomplished that slab pour, we've started building the CMU walls. I believe we have most of the challenge with the site behind us, and we're working with the general contractor to recover and speed up construction.
Next, we'll speak about Diamond Hill Jarvis addition renovation. As Tara indicated, we'll be adding more than 62,000 square feet in additions. The first of that is a 12,000-square-foot CTE addition. This project is broken into three phases, the CTE addition, a 50,000-square-foot two-story science classroom addition, and Phase Three, a renovation of a portion of the existing campus. This project has been met with challenges of its own. Shown on the image to the left is a relocated encore easement. The main power feed for the campus ran directly through our new Phase One building addition, and so, we had to go through the process of relocating an easement and relocating those power lines. Phase Two, however, will be starting on time. We've worked closely with the principal to relocate students that are currently sitting in portables, four portables specifically. We've relocated the students to spaces within the existing campus, allowing us to remove those portables over the Christmas break and start our Phase Two construction on time, which will begin in January.
Dunbar High School, we built a new addition and renovation of the existing athletic facility. The existing facility didn't accommodate girls' athletics or wrestling program. We added 5,400 square feet and renovated 8,300 square feet to incorporate girls' athletics to provide space for wrestling. Combined with the 2013 addition, we had almost 10,000 square foot of athletic space to Dunbar High School. In the photo to the left, you'll see some of the graphics that we've incorporated throughout the athletic facility. And as of today, construction is complete and ready to be occupied.
Next, we'll speak to the Eastern Hills addition renovation. Our contractor has mobilized on-site early last month. We will be building a front entry addition, a 50,000-square-foot three-story classroom and science wing addition, and will be renovating more than 3/4 of the entire campus. Both renovations of the existing campus and the addition will take place at the same time. This particular project is broken into 10 phases. Our contractor has started on Phase One. What's shown in the image to the left is actually our hazmat abatement contractor bringing fresh air into the building as they perform the hazardous abatement removal. Just for everyone to know, the abatement activities and removal of hazardous material happens after hours. We do not do those activities with students on campus. Our contractor mobilizes on-site at 3:00 PM and works through midnight. And this is because the activity is noisy and also creates dust, and we don't want that to impact student learning. Our contractor is currently building temporary partitions to separate the students from construction activities. Very important for us to have physical barriers for our students to never walk through into one of our job sites.
At Northside, we are in the process of building a new state-of-the-art 5,000-square-foot Mariachi Hall. We face some significant challenges. Upon investigation, every utility you can think of was located under the footprint of our building. In order to not impact school operations, we had to coordinate and work with the local municipalities to move and reroute each utility one at a time. Now that the utilities are out of the way, we drill piers, and as you can see from the photo, we are pouring concrete for the gray beams. The concrete slab pour will follow toward the end of the year, and we're looking to complete this project toward the middle of next year.
Next, on the same campus, the Northside addition renovation. We will have roughly a 9,000-square-foot addition in the form of a corridor connector connecting two buildings, conditioning that space and protecting the students from the elements. This particular project is broken into 12 phases. We're renovating more than 3/4 of the campus. The only piece that we're not touching is the culinary addition built as part of the last bond. Each phase is two months in duration. We've completed Phases One and Two, and some of those images are shown on the screen. I'd like to point your attention to the image to the right. What you see there is where former lockers, a lot of our high school campuses, for everyone who's visited them, we know that we have had a lot of existing lockers who have not been used in recent years. We've removed all those lockers and repurposed that space for collaboration. What's shown in the image to the right is actually student bench seating. This particular image shows a tile background, and what you also see there, it's kind of hard to see in the image, but there is some electrical outlets, so the students can power their devices between classes. The idea is, we don't want these hallways to just be hallways anymore. We want these to be learning spaces, areas for collaboration. And so, you'll see lots of similarities across a lot of our projects. In some cases, there'll be whiteboards instead of tile. In some cases, there'll be technology in the form of displays. Each project will have its unique features, but our contractor and architect have done a great job, and we're very happy with the success of this project to date.
Southwest High School, we built a 9,000-square-foot standalone athletic facility to accommodate boys' and girls' athletics. We're in the final stages of wrapping up construction, and as you can see in the photo to the left, you see the new HVAC ceiling units. We're in the process of making the final connections. The photo on the right is just a glimpse of some of the tile work and colors that we have incorporated in this facility. We still have some work to do, but we should be wrapping up this facility toward the end of the year.
Next, Western Hills addition renovation. As shown in the images on the screen, our contractor has mobilized on-site. You will see the construction activities getting started heavily over the Christmas break, once the students have left the campus. Some high points of the project, we're building a front entry addition, two classroom addition for art classrooms, roughly 3,300 square feet, and will be doing a major renovation to more than 2/3 of the campus. One interesting component of this project is we're actually relocating the central administration space. It's actually in the center of the campus. We're relocating it to the outside of the campus, so we can have that secure entry, and relocating a media center that currently resides in a basement up to that existing admin space to have more of a center of the campus, a nucleus of that campus.
OD Wyatt Athletics, we are building a new addition and an existing renovation of the existing facility. Before construction, the existing facility couldn't accommodate space for baseball, soccer, and wrestling, and these programs were located in the portables. We added 6,000-square-foot addition and renovated 6,300 of the existing space to incorporate baseball, soccer, track, football, and wrestling into one facility. Picture left is our new 6,000-square-foot addition with the weight room overlooking the football field. Right is an exterior, excuse me, is an interior photo of the new weight room. Construction is done, and the facility is currently being used.
Next, the Benbrook Baseball Softball Complex. We're building a new baseball field, new softball field, new concession and changing facility, scoreboards, lighting, warning track for both fields, and currently on track for completion in the first quarter of 2020, the end of this year, first quarter of 2020. The images shown on the screen are very recent. The image on the left is an aerial shot taken last week. You'll see that all sod has been placed on both the baseball and softball field. Half of our site work, concrete, has been poured. The image to the right shows our new concession and changing facility. The roof is on, our building is watertight, our contractor is finalizing the brick veneer work and focusing some of their attention on the interior finish-out of that space. We're very excited to see the students of Benbrook playing baseball and softball. We're very excited to see the students of Benbrook playing baseball and softball here in the spring.
Overton Park Elementary. Picture left is an aerial of the site. It shows the foundation that's poured and the steel erection that's taking place. In that same picture, you see a concrete box, which is the box for our storm shelter. To the right is a closer view of the steel erection as well as the CMU block that has started. This elementary school is still slated to open August of 2020.
Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from, questions or comments from the board? Trustee Evans?
For the addition at Heights by the football field right there, you mentioned that there was drainage or something with the addition of the building, is that going to cause any ponding elsewhere? Because that's, you know, right off that really busy street, Hewlin, and it's a dense area right there. I just want to make sure we're addressing all that.
Actually, excuse me, actually with the addition of the new athletic facility, we have some additional drainage that goes out to the street, so it should improve the problem that existed in the past.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Trustee Pos.
I don't have a question, just a comment. So this is the first time that I've actually seen renderings for all of our schools. I've seen what we're doing at Carter Riverside because that's in District Nine and I've known what we were, some of the ideas for tech, but seeing everything district-wide that is happening and listening to this is, it's just a huge point of pride for me personally. There isn't a single project that I've seen here that I don't think that we can be proud of, I mean, super proud of. Y'all have really knocked it out of the park and this is, I mean, I could be gone by the time that these are done, but this is something that's going to outlast all of us. So I just want to thank you for all of the work that you've done and I know you've done a ton of work with the community as well. And that's not always the easiest work, but you've invested the time and you've listened and I think that they have truly been heard and I just want to thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Luevanos.
Thank you, President Ramos. Thank you for this report on every high school and then on all the completed projects that we have in 2019 and I know some of them were completed in 2018, so thank you. So you guys mentioned that we might finish in four and a half years, so that will save money to the district. Do you know, do you have an estimate amount of how much money we might save by finishing up? Because we have money for escalation purposes, so how much money will we be saving even if we finish four and a half years?
That's difficult to pinpoint exactly what we're talking about in terms of savings, but I can address it this way, in that we've experienced somewhere between eight and 12% escalation over the last eight years. So if we take 18 months off of that, you know, let's say we're going to, somewhere around 12%, I would think, and that would be at the back end of the program, so those are big numbers.
Thank you.
Looks like those are all the questions or comments from the board. We appreciate your presentation. Thank you. At this time, we will move to public comment. Let me remind you that because of the restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange on a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with one, a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry, two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry, or three, direct a person to visit with staff about the issue. While the board listens to concerns of a general nature and issues of common and individual concern, the board will not hear complaints about specific individual employees or public officers during the public comment session. Speaker shall refrain from mentioning names of individual employees or public officers during their comments. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. In accordance with the board policy, BED Local, speaker shall have a three-minute time limit and I ask that you please observe this rule. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. First speaker for tonight is going to be Larry Mercer. Larry will be followed by Terry Roach.
Again, my name is Larry Mercer and I'm a representative of EAG, Educational and Economical Awareness Group. We formed this group this year because we noticed that a lot of schools that are in our area was disenfranchised and underrepresented or wasn't receiving the same amount of resources that all other schools receive. Can I get a shot of this on screen? What I'd like to point out first is for 2018, Fort Worth had 85 elementary schools in the state and of course, 30 of those schools all failed the TEA STAR examination. So we were looking at why did these schools fail and we noticed that all of these schools were located in the southeast part of Fort Worth, primarily in the black, brown area. And they represent 15,000 elementary children each year, but over the past 20 years, they have been disenfranchised by the Fort Worth ISD. Now, when we first started working on this, we noticed that two schools in this area were receiving extra funds. That was Van Sant Quinn and Morningside Elementary. And for that particular year, those schools scored a C+. All other schools with the grade of F. Now, we were advised that they were going to remove the rainwater foundation, those extra funds this past year, and I assume that they did. Because when we looked at everything this year, Van Sant Quinn and Morningside Elementary also had a grade of F. And so when we started working with these schools, we noticed that they didn't have the same amount of equipment. When I say equipment, we're talking about laptops, Chromebooks, things that have their curriculum on it that they need to do the schoolwork on as the other schools in other parts of Fort Worth. Now, when we did a little research on other schools, we also noticed that not only did they have more than twice the equipment that they needed to do their schoolwork, they also had two tech people to keep the equipment operating, to make sure that their wifi and everything worked. And in addition to that, when we received information from Fort Worth ISD CFO's office and the CPA...
Thank you, Mr. Mercer.
Is it already five minutes?
It's three.
How many minutes I have?
Three. Your time is up. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Terry Roach. Terry will be followed by Carlos Turcios.
There are rules for speakers, there are rules for school districts. I'm here to ask you to follow those rules. Three points. Texas Education Code, Section 21.404, requires schools to provide teachers at least 450 minutes of planning time within each two-week period, stipulating that the planning period be no less than 45 minutes. Currently, all secondary schools share a daily schedule with 45-minute classes, but all schools modify this schedule at times for reasons such as homeroom, pep rallies, and other activities. Teachers who teach six or fewer classes receive the required times. However, all elective teachers who teach seven daily classes are being willfully and systematically denied their due time by board policy. I ask the district to improve the quality of education by ensuring that all teachers receive the prescribed time. I suggest appointing a compliance officer on each campus and that until an effective remedy is implemented, classes at the secondary level remain at least 45 minutes to ensure that the district respects the rights of all its teachers. Second, I believe the district is subverting the letter and spirit of Code 25.092, which requires that students not be given credit for a class unless the student is in attendance for at least 90% of the days the class is offered. At campuses such as South Hills High School, administrators are asking teachers to mark students present even if they arrive at the last second of a 45-minute class. In other words, if a teacher sees a student, the student should be marked present. In attendance accounting, there is only absent or present. There is no tardy and in fact, the word tardy no longer appears in board policy. This fraudulent reporting undermines our values, the efforts of educators, and harms students at the expense of common sense. And because this happens only at select campuses, there is a lack of equity across the district. I ask you to remedy this problem immediately by adopting a clear policy like the one found in the Benbrook Middle High School handbook, which states that a student who arrives more than 20 minutes late be marked absent. Finally, the TEA ratings released in August paint a picture of a district in crisis that lags behind almost all other schools in the state, districts in the state. Among the top 30 largest cities in Texas, only Midland and Odessa also have scores in the 70s. Over the last two school years, our district, like almost all districts, raised its score, but Fort Worth gained only four points, while our students' STAR results and graduation rates remained unchanged at 69 and 65 respectively. The superintendent points to having cut in half the number of improvement required schools from 24 to 11. Yet of 130 campuses that received scores in the latest report, 18 received an F, 20 received a D, 51 a C. If a school with an F is not one that should be considered improvement required, then what is? The stagnation and decline in academic achievement, especially at many of our most challenged schools, has been hidden by the district squeezing as many points as possible from components such as college career and military readiness, which do not directly reflect student learning. I do agree with Dr. Scribner that the letter grade alone does not tell the whole story. I urge you to take a deeper look at this story. No amount of spin or excuses can convince a reasonable, unbiased person that the trajectory is headed in the right direction. It is... for change.
Thank you. Next, we have Carlos Turcios. Carlos will be followed by Norma Garcia Lopez.
Good evening, Dr. Scribner, School Board and Board President, Hacinto Ramos. My name is Carlos Turcios and I am here to talk about the drug epidemic that our students are experiencing. As we are all aware across the country, we have heard about the vaping epidemic that is hitting the youth. The CDC has already reported 47 deaths and 2,290 confirmed and probable illnesses associated with vaping. I come here with great concerns for the well-being of our students. For the past couple of months, more and more students have began using vaping pens with THC. From middle school to high school, every day, there's always someone spotted smoking using vaping pens, students smoking in the restrooms, in the back of the school buses, and even during class. Teachers and administrators only see what is visible, but what I can inform you is that many students are hiding in front plain sight. This epidemic is affecting students in a negative way, academically speaking and emotionally speaking. I urge the ISD to do something about this underground epidemic that is sweeping our students into the abyss of uncertainty. We need to have presentations for the parents about the problems of vaping and how to help their children overcome addictions and their problems. Maybe have a once-a-semester mandatory drug test on students, detect who has been smoking, and then get them the proper care, discipline, and treatment that is required. Also making sure that all administrators and teachers follow the rules and report all activities that are malicious. Administrators have been too soft and ineffective when dealing with this issue. Administrators are not doing their best in keeping these students safe from these pernicious substances. We cannot wait for a student to go to the hospital or to die in order for us to take action, we need to take action now. And reminders that these students need help. We shouldn't see them as criminals, we shouldn't see them as evil people, we should see them as students that need help, that need assistance, that need love, that need care, because the whole community, all parents, all students, and all leaders need to come together to address this issue so we can help fight this epidemic that is swallowing up all our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Norma Garcia Lopez. Norma will be followed by Sandra Maria Garcia.
Good evening, School Board, President, and Dr. Scribner. Soy Norma Garcia Lopez. I'm here to discuss an item that is on the agenda actually under the executive session part, and I guess since this individual is no longer an employee, I could say her name, Georgia Clark. Today is Human Rights Day. We must never disregard the importance of our individual rights, our individual human rights and the autonomy of every person, including our, you know, our students. And I wanted to touch base on this because I don't want this individual back in our classrooms and as the only options that we have are not something that I also am happy with, but hey, my money's building a wall that I don't want either, so why not? I don't want a racist person teaching in our classrooms. But today, I read an article of a school community in New Haven, Connecticut, that's fighting back after ICE detained a student. His teachers tried to send him homework so he would not fall behind. The school where many were still getting to know Mario Aguilar began fighting to bring him back. Teachers bundled up homework to send Mario in ICE detention. They wrote letters pushing for his release. Students designed free Mario protest posters in the school's print shop. They put his face on a sticker and sold it to raise for his commissary. For weeks, they kept his desk in Spanish class empty, hoping he would return. Unable to reach his family for weeks, guess who Mario called? His school. And it was his counselor who he reached out to. Now Mario supporters are at the school getting ready for another rally as they, as an immigration judge is getting ready to decide his fate this Thursday. His supporters feel dangers of doing nothing are far too great. If Mario's, if he is deported to a country that he fled, it could be a death sentence for him. And if they don't stand up for him, then they fear that no one will. So if we as a community don't stand up for our children, for those that, you know, take advantage of the vulnerability of right now in our communities, then who, then what are we standing for? I'm here to just remind y'all the psychological effects that are caused by the political climate that's going into our classrooms and to also, you know, remind that this should never happen and we should all make sure that every school administrators are making sure that students feel safe, especially in our immigrant community, because I feel that there's a lot, there's a lot of complaints going on that parents don't want to come and make those complaints because they fear.
Thank you. Next, we have Sandra. Sandra will be followed by Jessica Ramirez.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Maria Garcia Rubio. I was born in Francisco Javier Mina Durango, Mexico. I am a product of Fort Worth ISD from Diamond Hill Elementary, Meacham, and Trimble Tech High School. I'm also a product of Denver Avenue Elementary. If y'all didn't know, I'm also one of the first students that was admitted through a court decision as an undocumented student in Fort Worth ISD. And what made me who I am today was the teachers back then, because it wasn't my own people. I was bullied and I won't say the words people used against me for being undocumented and that's the kind word we use now, but back then, that wasn't the word that they used. And the teachers were the ones that spoke, that made it safe to come to school and made me who I am today. As the president of SWNT Fort Worth, I'm responsible for 100 high school Latinas. And I am sad that in 2019, I have to speak to them about racism that we thought were over with back in the early 80s when I was bullied at Denver Avenue. I ask you to please stick to your guns and remove a teacher that isn't making it safe for the students to come and learn at Fort Worth ISD. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica. Jessica will be followed by Mr. Stephen Poole.
Hi, my name is Jessica Ramirez and I am also proud...
Hi, my name is Jessica Ramirez, and I am also proud. I went to the Fort Worth ISD. I started at the New Commerce Academy. I came to this country when I was 14 years old, and then from there, from then, I went to Northside High School and graduated in 2014. And now I have two daughters in the Fort Worth ISD. Mia, she's down here. She's in pre-K. No, she's in kindergarten now, and then Valeria who's back there. She's a fifth grader. But I'm here today to talk to you about Georgia Clark. It's just, I'm just mad because like, like the oppressor has had better treatment than the people she's oppressed. Like from the very beginning, we come here to speak about her, and we can say her name, but yet kids that were abused by her had to come out here and speak in front of everybody and say their name to file a complaint. So from the very beginning, like, we can see like the different treatments. And now the fact that she won her appeal, because as I read, she won it because there was discrepancies on how the complaints were taken. And we learned from a young lady who was here that she went and complained a year before those tweets came out to her. She went and complained to her principal and gave him a letter about all the complaints that she had, and that letter ended up disappearing. So I think that that principal needs to be held accountable, whoever she or he is. And also, I know that we have two options. We either pay her out or we give her her job back. But I think we should pay her out. I want her gone. I don't want her in our classrooms anymore. I think she's done enough damage, and I just want her gone. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Stephen Poole. Stephen Poole will be followed by Michael Ryan.
Good evening. We just finished the annual school climate survey we conduct across all schools, and tonight I have for you the district overview results. When we publish the school-specific results tomorrow, I'll email you a link that will show you all of the schools, not in just your individual districts, but across all of the district. I'm going to start by highlighting one positive. Very positive responses to the question around the curriculum and the quality of the curriculum and the ease of use, and that is a night-and-day turnaround from where we were a year ago. So that's one positive. I have a couple of negatives. Morale is one of the lowest or highest-rated questions on our survey. When asked, morale at my school is good this year. Over 61% disagree with 31% strongly disagreeing, and that's up from where we were last year. So think of it going down a hallway. Six out of every 10 teachers in a classroom say morale is worse this year than it was last year. And there are several factors that go into morale, and it's not just school leadership. A lot of it's what the district does itself. Discipline. Over 53% disagree with 37% strongly disagreeing that discipline is enforced consistently and effectively. And 68% disagree with 40% strongly disagreeing that unreleased students are not permitted to disrupt the learning environment. Again, that's worse than it was last year and the year before and the year before. Discipline or the lack thereof in our schools, we can point to a reason why parents are taking their kids out of our schools and sending them to charter schools, and it's just getting worse. The eight-period day rated very negatively. We've hashed through that for the last year and a half now, and hopefully some changes will be coming soon for our high schools and secondary schools. But it's the elementary that where a lot of the focus on the survey and the negative comments and responses come from. Overwhelmingly, they disagree of the elementary leadership's mandated paperwork and activities and that they do not result in academic performance. A quote from that survey says, "This campus and district is all based on compliance. This campus and the district are more worried about the day-to-day, week-to-week things that do not amount to anything. For example, we are more worried about bulletin boards rather than fixing the behavior issues. We have had numerous teachers hit, punched, and called names on a daily basis for the entire school year. Yet it's more important that the administration check to see if I have put my objectives in a grid versus solving the behavior issues on this campus. Until we get the little things right, we're never going to improve instruction to get us that last one-tenth of a point to get to B." So we have big work ahead, and I had a long conversation with the superintendent about this yesterday.
Thank you.
And I've committed to work with him, and there's a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Ryan. Michael will be followed by Rich Deaut, I believe. My apologies if I mispronounced.
Okay, President Ramos, members of the board, Dr. Scribner. I'm happy to be here today to see all the improvements we're making on our schools. Wanted to talk to you for just a minute about Farrington Field. It goes back with the history that goes with that. My father could sit there and talk to you about the Mighty Mites and the 20,000 people that would show up at games with football there. I can talk to you about playing games there when we first integrated Fort Worth schools. And even before that, when U L finally decided it was okay for African-American schools to play white schools. I can go back and show you a program I've got from doing an elementary music concert at Billingsley Fieldhouse. I think you've done the right thing by sitting there and saying, though, that we need to repurpose that area to keep the facade of the stadium. It is wonderful to recognize Jack Billingsley's contributions to the district is absolutely correct, to keep the trees that are there are fine. What we do in the future with that business area, I hope that we do it to continue to serve students there. One of the things that had happened a number of years ago when I worked for the district was to sit there with Dr. Johnson and come up with a performing arts and a professional development center there that, because the performing arts side of it would allow us to sit there and with companies coming in, basically run that facility at no charge through the course of the year. Again, you've done the right thing with, to look at Farrington Field, what you want to do with it and in the other parts of the district. I would love for that to be a district headquarters, again, professional development and performing arts area, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Final speaker for tonight is going to be Rich Deaut, I believe.
Thank you, and you got the name very close. My name is Rich Deaut, and I live in South Lake, and I am on your ballot tonight for the Tarrant County Appraisal District Board of Directors. I've been involved in the property tax issue for a number of years, and the reason I'm running is because, especially lately, I have heard from a lot of elected leaders. I'm a civil engineer, so I interact with city councils and school boards pretty frequently, and they've all told me that the appraisal system is broken, and they mean it. And so I've been running, and frankly, at this point, I'm in pretty good shape as far as my ballot numbers are coming. But a couple of weeks ago, something happened in my race, and I think there are some people out there who identified my candidacy as a candidacy of change and fixing the problems that are at TAD. Now, I'm assuming that you all have heard from your constituents about these appraisals and how out of control they are or how disparate they are. Sometimes it's a matter of equity between a house next door to another house, and they're just appraised wildly differently. And there are reasons for that, and I won't go into all of those, but what happened a couple of weeks ago is they were, I guess, identified. I've been working my network of people. I know a lot of people, and, but somebody, I think, figured my candidacy could really bring some change, and so that's why I'm here tonight, really, is because I know you all have been getting a lot of emails about that, and sometimes that can be a little overwhelming, I think. And I don't think anybody meant to overwhelm you. I know you all appreciate community engagement, however it comes, and all, but, and I've been encouraged by that, but I know it can be a lot of work, and when people go to that kind of effort for you, I wanted to show up and tell you what I do for you. First of all, I, these things are kind of baked. I understand that this is on the agenda, and you probably already have a plan for those votes. But if you carve off a few votes for me, I'm going to go back to TAD, and I'm going to tell them the Fort Worth Independent School District Board wants these problems fixed, and I will take that as a message back for you. And also, y'all probably have never seen anybody show up campaigning for this. My campaign has been public in a way. I've been going and talking to school boards and city councils in Tarrant County this morning, and my approach has been to be a little bit more public about it, and you probably have never seen that in this race before. But I'm going to be back because the problems there are going to need fixing, and that's going to require a group of people to do it, working together. And so what I will do is come back, and I'll report to you and tell you what's going on and figure out what we can do as solutions, and I'll try to engage you in that and listen to your concerns and things that you're learning so that we can engage your spheres of influence to bring about change in a peaceful way at TAD. So that's why I'm running. I hope you'll carve out some votes for me tonight, and if you have any questions, you can get ahold of me. Very good. Thank you very much for y'all's time.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. At this time, we will reconvene in regular session in the board conference room. Okay. Going to get it started again. As Board President, I'm making the following statement in accordance with Board Policy BBA/FA Local. This is a reminder that all board members, to all board members of the legal conflict of interest requirements and disclosure requirements, you may have matters under consideration on the agenda for this meeting. If required by law, board members shall recuse themselves from all discussion and shall abstain from voting on any matter pertaining to such a disclosure. No one has disclosed any of that to us for this meeting, for this discussion, so we'll move on to consent agenda items. Are there any questions concerning consent agenda items from the board? Trustee Paz?
I didn't, I left my, I didn't bring my computer, so I don't have my, the number, but it is the MOUs with the hospitals. Yes. I just have a, I have a question, kind of an operational question about that, which I understand is not my purview, but, okay, so is this related to, we have teachers at Cook's that serve students that are, that are there for long-term care?
So just, if you can identify the item, it's, I believe it's the item I...
Item I, approved ratification of a memorandum of understanding between Cook Children's Medical Center and Fort Worth ISD.
Yes.
Yes.
So this is our hospitalized students, so service through special education.
Right.
Corey, go ahead.
Yeah. So we typically, you know how we have hospitalized students that are there for maybe four weeks or more and need hospital care? They still have to, by law, we have to provide an education to them. And so we provide the teachers. So there's seven teachers that we have that go out to serve these students. You know, we don't always know what kids are where, so we just have it on staff. If there's kids there, we've got to take care of them. So we do that through our office, but it could be any child, you know, sometimes we have long-term that need, we just don't want to leave them out, and that's all it is. It's just a practice we've done for years.
Yes. So my question about this, so it's recently come to my attention that we have, that there are students that are, that are there under the care, that are not receiving services because they're not coming from Fort Worth ISD. And it was my understanding that as long as they were there, we were supposed to be serving them.
Yes. If they're, if you tell me that, if you send that to me, I'll have someone look at that. We have, that's why we have the teachers there. If they're in that camp, if they're at Cook's, we take care of them because they're in Tarrant County.
Okay. Yeah, then I definitely want to follow up because there's, I know, I know one specifically that was just transferred out for that, for that reason.
Yeah. Any student that is at Cook's, we will serve student regardless of what home, school district they're in for the amount of time that they're there at Cook's within our attendance area.
Okay. Okay. Well, then we can follow up. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board on consent agenda? Trustee Dar?
This is just a little, kind of a nitpicky item, but F, the approval of the agreement between the City of Fort Worth and the after-school services. I actually don't have a question. I just made, I noticed on, in the exhibit A, it just needs a little proofreading. There's some dates that are off. At the end, it mentioned, "We're anticipating serving X number of students for the 2018-2019 school year," just things like that so that we can clean that up before we sign that.
We'll take care of it.
All right, good. Thank you, Trustee Dar. Any other questions from the board on consent agenda? Okay. This concludes our discussion of agenda items. Okay, in accordance with the open meetings law, the board opened a meeting at 5:30 PM in the boardroom with a quorum present, recessed and reconvened open session in the board conference room. Adjourned regular session convened executive session, adjourned executive session is now reconvened open session at 8:58 PM in the boardroom with a quorum present. We will move on to accepting consent agenda items. Looking at item number, let me check. I think it's number 12. Yes. So we're looking to accept consent agenda items. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by trustee Anaya Luébanos. We have a second by trustee CJ Evans. Do we have any discussion on consent agenda items? Looks like no discussion. Please move the vote. Motion passes eight, four, and zero against. 13A, we had no items that were removed from consent agenda, so we will move on to 13B. Do I have a motion for the personnel as discussed in executive session? Yeah, I'm sorry. My apologies. For the hiring of the executive director for Network Services. So we have a motion by trustee Ashley Paz. We have a second by trustee Anaya Luébanos. Do we have any discussion? Looks like no discussion. Please move the vote. Motion passes eight, four, and zero against. Dr. Scribner, I think you want to make an introduction.
Yes, thank you very much, President Ramos. We are excited tonight to bring on board a new executive director for Network Services, and I'll allow our chief of staff, Karen Mullin, not to introduce that individual.
Thank you. We're very excited to have Mr. Paul Zen promoted to our executive director for Network Services, who will be responsible for our infrastructure as well as our cybersecurity. Mr. Zen has been with us for four years in the district and will take on this role. Mr. Zen, would you like to stand up, please, and introduce any family or friends you've brought with you today this evening? Thank you. We appreciate you being with us.
Congratulations, Mr. Zen. So moving on to action items, we're looking at, we will not have 14A or 14B tonight, so we will move on to 14C, which is to take action to approve the proposed termination on certain term contract employees for good cause pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code. Do I have a motion? Looks like I have a motion by trustee Ashley Paz. What is that motion?
I move to propose termination of the Chapter 21 term contract of Albert Robles for good cause.
Thank you. So we have a motion by trustee Ashley Paz. We have a second by trustee Toby Jackson. Do we have any discussion? Looks like no discussion. Please move the vote. Motion passes eight, four, and zero against. So moving on to 14D, which is titled, "The Official Ballot for Election of Members of the Tarrant Appraisal District." Do I have a motion? Looks like trustee CJ Evans. What is your motion?
I move to elect John Malinoff.
Okay, so we have a motion by trustee CJ Evans. We have a second by trustee Ashley Paz. Any discussion? We have trustee Paz.
Yes. I have been, so this is just a little clarification or not, I don't know. In the past, I have been very critical of the process that Fort Worth ISD has used to select this seat. In past years, it's been, you know, a board member shows up with a, with an application, and that's it. I would like to thank our staff for having a much more transparent process this time. It was, you know, we were all informed well in advance, had the opportunity to bring, bring nominations, and then there was a long period before we're actually voting tonight, and I just, any time that we are improving a process after I complain, I complain about it, I'm not saying it's improved because I complained, but if I complain about it being bad, I'm going to praise it for being good, and I just want to thank you all for adding transparency to this and to Mr. Malinoff for all the service that he's given us over the years. all the service that he's given us over the years.
Thank you. So no more, it looks like no more discussion. Please move the vote. Motion passes eight, four, and zero against. Moving on to 14E, which is approved, "The 2020-2021 School Calendar's Traditional Alice Carlson ALC Early College and Joe Kelly School." We have a motion by trustee Ashley Paz. We have a second by trustee Anaya Luébanos. Do we have any discussion? Looks like no discussion. Please move the vote. Motion passes eight, four, and zero against. 14F is approved, the board resolution and offered to owner of 5062 Willie Street, Fort Worth, Tarrant County, Texas for property being acquired for school use. Do I have a motion? Looks like we have a motion by trustee Quentin Phillips. We have a second by trustee Ashley Paz. Do we have any discussion on this item? Looks like no discussion. Please move the vote. Motion passes eight, four, and zero against. 14G, which is approved ratification of a memorandum of understanding between early childhood intervention of North Central Texas and Fort Worth Independent School District. Do I have a motion? A motion by trustee Ashley Paz. We have a second by trustee Anaya Luébanos. We have this, we have discussion item by, or discussion by trustee Andar.
Just for the record, I am abstaining from this vote because I participated in the creation of this document, and so therefore I will abstain.
Thank you. Looks like there's no more discussion on this item. If we move the vote. Motion passes seven, four, and one person abstaining. 14H, which is consideration and possible action regarding Fort Worth Independent School District versus Georgia Clark TEA docket number 127-LH-07-2019. We'll give the system a minute to catch up. Considering it's less, the last agenda item, and then if we can't get the system to catch up, we can entertain a motion in a second, and then if we still haven't gotten the system to catch up, we will vote by raising our hands. So do I have a motion?
Yes, President Ramos, I have a motion.
So what is your motion, trustee Quentin Phillips?
Yes, sir. I move to authorize administration and legal counsel to appeal the decision of the commissioner in the matter of Fort Worth ISD versus Georgia Clark TA docket number 127-LH-07-2019.
So we have a motion by trustee Quentin Phillips. We have a second by trustee Ashley Paz. System is not caught up. Ask you if you're voting yea to raise your hand. Thank you. Voting nay. Anyone abstaining? Looks like the motion passes unanimously. We have now, we will not have a grievance this evening, so we're now moving on to the final item, which is 15, which is comment by board members or superintendent on current district activities and announcements. Do we have any comments or announcements by any of our colleagues on the board? Yes, trustee Dar?
Thank you, President Ramos. Angela Groves, who is a science teacher at McLean Middle School, is one of 39 teachers that has been selected to participate in the 2020 Space Foundation International Teachers' Liaison Program. After a rigorous application process, this nation and worldwide search identified 33 educators from the United States and six educators from India, Mexico, and Puerto Rico who were chosen for their active promotion of space, science, and STEM education in the classroom. Started by the Space Foundation in 2014, the Teacher Liaison Program positively influences STEM education on an international level, using space-related content to inspire the next generation of astronauts, scientists, engineers, and space pioneers. Teacher liaisons serve as advocates for STEM education and use trainer and resources provided by the Space Foundation to further integrate space principles into their classrooms, schools, communities, and beyond. New teacher liaisons are selected by a panel comprised of experienced teacher liaison as well as representatives from the space industry and the military. The Space Foundation Teachers Liaison Program is funded by Lockheed Martin and the Miller Wood Foundation. Again, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Angela Groves. I am grateful for the impact that she makes on the, on Fort Worth ISD's future scientists, engineers, mathematicians, astronauts, and space pioneers.
Thank you. Any other trustees have any comments or announcements? I'll make, make a couple. One, want to acknowledge that our CFO, Elsie Shiro, has announced retirement, and want to very publicly thank you for your years, years of service to Fort Worth ISD and the students and the entire system for doing all the work that you've done, and we are eternally grateful for your service. Elsie Shiro, appreciate you very much. Let's give her a round. Many folks that are grateful for monitoring the dollars and ensuring that we have financial stability, my friend. The final one is also to acknowledge and recognize this board that participated in Lone Star Governance Training over the weekend, two full days. Most of us have been at it for seven days straight, including our fearless leader of Dr. Ken Scribner. That is a board that is laser-focused on student outcomes, that is 100% committed to young people and not unclear about what we're here to do. So looking forward to the continued partnership with Dr. Scribner and the administrative team as we work collectively to advocate for all children in Fort Worth Independent School District. Board, I want to thank you and congratulate you as well for investing the time, the energy to, to, to put into work, because as many people know, we get paid a lot of money, which in the streets, we say we do this for free 99. All right, my friends, that's, that concludes our meeting. This meeting is adjourned.